Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a piece of legislation to be discussed by the members of the public to Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 1735, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from Gregory's Restaurant, Inc., Located at 1199 Washington Pike in Bridgeville, Pennsylvania, to the applicant Woods House, LLC, for premises located at 4604 Monongahela Street, Pittsburgh, 15207, restaurant known as Woods House pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code 4-461. That concludes the piece of legislation for discussion by the public. Thank you and have a great day.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for today, Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. This is in reference to Bill 1735. I am Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this afternoon's public hearing. We are joined by Councilwoman Harris. And if we may, Madam Clerk, begin with the reading then of Bill 1735.
Bill 1735, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from Gregory's Restaurant to the applicant Woods House, LLC, for the premises located at 4604 Monongahela Street, restaurant known as Woodhouse.
Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you very much. We have representing the applicant, Mr. Nicholas Miller, who I'm going to ask if you would make your presentation first, and then we'll go to Mr. Panya, who is the applicant.
Yes, my name is Nicholas Miller and I'm here from Heron Business Law, and I represent Woods House, LLC, the applicant for the current request for the intermunicipal transfer of Pennsylvania Restaurant Liquor License Number R2778, from Gregory's Restaurant, Inc. in Bridgeville, PA, to the proposed location at 4604 Monongahela Street, Pittsburgh, PA, in Pittsburgh's Hazelwood neighborhood. At the time that Woods House, LLC, entered into agreement of sale for the purchase of this liquor license, upon a diligent search, both independently and by and through the use of a liquor license broker, no city of Pittsburgh liquor licenses were readily available for purchase, meaning that they were either not for sale or had liens, encumbrances, or unclear title upon them that could make them otherwise unusable or untransferable. Section 461B3 of the Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires that an applicant seeking an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license must first obtain a resolution from the receiving municipality, in this case, the city of Pittsburgh, approving the intermunicipal transfer of the license. We have made such requests to the city of Pittsburgh, and further, all requirements set forth by the city of Pittsburgh in bringing this matter before you now have been met. The property located at 4604 Monongahela Street is unique. It was built in 1792 by John Woods and is considered one of the oldest remaining structures in Pittsburgh. John Woods was a political leader, a federalist, and a member of a prominent founding Pittsburgh family and was of Scottish descent. In fact, John Woods drafted the plan laying out the city of Pittsburgh in 1784, was elected to the Pennsylvania Senate, and was elected as a representative to the 14th United States Congress. Needless to say, there's an overabundance of history contained in the Woodhouse which has unfortunately fallen into extreme disrepair. Krish Pandya is undertaking the task of renovating the Woods House into a Scottish-style pub to give such an important landmark new life in the hopes of preserving it for further generations to come. Mr. Pandya does not intend Woods House to be a watering hole, but is intended to be a Scottish-style pub, where first and foremost, it is intended to exist as a social gathering place and a communal focal point. Here, you will find food, music, good company, and secondary to that, you will be able to enjoy a pint of beer or a glass of Scotch whiskey, should you be so inclined. The Woods House is expected to employ individuals from and in around the Hazelwood community, and as for any comments regarding the progress of the current renovations to the Woods House, I will leave that to Mr. Pandya to discuss himself.
Okay, Nick, thank you. Hi, Mr. Panya, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. It's your, you have the table, and if you would, please introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your desire to house the liquor license at the, forgive me, Woods House.
The Woods House. Firstly, thank you for having me. My name is Krish Pandya. I've been a resident of the city of Pittsburgh for over 25 years. I'm in Carnegie Mellon and until recently worked for Alcoa. Spent about 20 years in the corporate life and recently left Alcoa and started my own consulting business. The Woods House became a passion when I was looking for some investment properties about a couple of years ago. It was owned by the URA, and it became a passion of mine to try and see how we can bring it, restore it. I ran through a number of different options from a business case perspective to make it sustainable. It, you know, based on some of the early estimates and the architectural renderings and the support I got from the engineers, it was a significant investment. It was, it's going to be quite a large project, and the pub concept kind of fit in there from a business case perspective, but also, right now, there are no restaurants in Hazelwood. There are no eating places, there's no way that families could go and eat. So it kind of all came together to say, this could be a good opportunity to bring the house back, restore it, have a family-type gathering place in Hazelwood, at the same time be able to sustain it over five, 10 years, 15 years, to maintain the property. So that was, that's the background on the Woods House. That's what, what got me going. It's been, it's been a three-year journey working with the URA, which owned the property, and they've been, done a fantastic job in, you know, supporting us, but also making sure I understand the process to buy a historic property, understand the requirements from the National Park Service, the State Historic Preservation Office. So it's been a journey, and about a year and a half ago, we finally acquired the property and we've started to work to rehab it.
So the Woods House is an historic property?
It is on the National Historic Register, and it's also on the, obviously, on the State Historic Preservation Office's map and the city of Pittsburgh. And I've gone through at least four board meetings with the Historic Committee in Pittsburgh to make sure all the architectural details are right. We've gone through the application process with the state and the National Park Service and are working out the details to make sure that we meet all the guidelines. So it's, it's quite a challenge to work with three different historic societies because they don't always sometimes agree on what, what to do, but it's, we're pulling it together.
No, thank you for handling it with such care. Greatly appreciate it, thank you. We also have representatives from the URA here who are instrumental in transferring the, the sale of the property to Mr. Panya. Clarion, can I go with you first, please?
Sure, my name is Clarion Healy. I'm a Real Estate Development Officer. I first met Krish in July of 2015, and he expressed an interest in seeing the property. We had, had had the property out for, request for proposals on different occasions, and we hadn't found a developer, but Krish came through with a great plan and a great idea, and we were happy to help support him in his project.
Thank you.
It was July of 2015 when we first met.
Okay, and Mr. Miller, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
For what you have to offer.
My name's Evan Miller. I'm with the Urban Redevelopment Authority as well, and I worked with Krish for quite some time, about, starting in, yeah, 2016, all the way through September of 2018, when I then took on a new role at the Authority. But I worked with Krish closely and out in the Hazelwood community, would go to meetings with Krish with the help of Hazelwood Initiative as well, and I just want to say that we're fully supportive of this project, and Krish has done an amazing amount of community engagement at the outset of the project. Residents were skeptical, and it's amazing to see how much that's kind of changed in the support that he's now receiving from the community. He's been extremely active in being available and accessible to them. I know he's mentioned that he'll offer his phone number to neighbors who have concerns about having a bar nearby, so we're very confident that Krish is a responsible steward of this property.
Thank you, thanks, Evan. And we have also the nighttime, our nighttime economy manager, Alison Harndon, who I understand you have been working with them through the process as well.
Not terribly. Just as this license transfer came up, I asked a few questions. We went out and looked at the property. I think it's really exciting what you're bringing to the neighborhood. It's, it's really a beautiful concept, and, but I do, you know, I have some questions. And just so you know, my role with the city is to be a liaison between food, beverage, entertainment businesses and the residents and the city. And also within the city, I help to, help the city transition to more under, a city that operates at night. So we have to change some of our processes, and until such time, we kind of have to go with what we've got. And a lot of times, people come to us with really a beautiful plan about the venue, but we don't have a lot of oversight currently over how things are operated. So we would have to work on, live with the word of the person coming in that they're going to operate the way they say they are, or... So I think it's really a beautiful concept. I have Scottish descent, too, so it's like, ah, you know, I'm going to be there. But I just had a few questions. And I think, I think the, the most complaints we get from residents around nightlife businesses, of course, are noise, and then it would be also trash management or waste management. So if you could talk a little bit about how you, if there is a plan in place for, for those. I know, I know you've been working with the community, too, and I have to commend you for that because that is not something that a lot of people do a lot of, and it really goes a long way.
I have a point of order. I've never seen it go back and forth with questions with staff members.
I'll allow it.
So, okay, just so it's done at other meetings.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I'll chair the meeting and I'll allow it.
Okay, just so it's done at other meetings. And I am Darlene Harris, and I am at this hearing also, since he did not introduce me yet. City Councilwoman.
I did have to.
Thank you.
So would you speak a little bit about your waste management and your noise plan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, and just in terms of, just maybe just touch on the hours of operation, just because we were, when we sat with the community, we wanted, there were a couple of concerns that came up. One was noise, obviously. Second was parking, lighting. I mean, right now, that street is not well lit, and there's...
Let me just say this.
Yeah, so they were actually, one, so it was a combination of concerns, but they were also pleased that we'd be able to put in some order, put some lights, and bring just transparency to that whole neighborhood. In terms of hours and operations, what we agreed with the community, which they felt is, we're not, it's going to, 11:00 PM is the latest, we will shut down, the, you know, that was, that'd be the latest the pub would be open. So on weekdays, we were looking at 5:00 to 11:00 PM, and on, on weekends, possibly because there was a lot of interest for lunch, we were looking at maybe 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So those were the hours of operation. But the city code, I was not, because it's not such a big place, I was not required to provide parking spots, but we have provided six spots in, in, in the property with accessible parking, as well as, we're looking at buying some adjacent properties down the line and to create some overfill parking spots, so there's no issues with street parking. So we are working, and the community is satisfied with that approach right now. So we're going to continue working. In terms of waste management, again, you know, I've not been a restaurant operator. This is my first...
That was my next question.
Yeah. So we, we are, I, I am going to be forming an operations company, and, and there's going to be a couple of experienced people coming on to manage the details of waste. What was required, and what we've been very diligently doing, is making sure that the kitchen is separate from the main house to protect the house, all the utilities, the bathrooms, everything is located in the, and in terms of accessibility on the property, we're going to have an enclosed waste manage, or waste type area, which is, which is not going to be visible to the public. And we're also going to be providing access to come into the property to remove waste. So from a planning perspective, we put that in place. The architect I'm working with is Indovina Associates. They are up in the Strip District, and they're wonderful in terms of laying all this out and making sure that it meets the historic requirements. So it's been a challenge to bring it up to code, but at the same time, have some preservation. So, so that's, that's where we are at a high level, and anything else?
Yeah, and I think the location that you're in, you have the luxury of enclosing that dumpster where, in the more urban part of the city, we don't. So that's part, usually what the, not, not even so much of the visibility of it, but people also adding their dumps, their waste to your dumpster. So, yeah. And I saw somewhere that they were going to close the kitchen, that the community wants you to close the kitchen at nine, so was that changed?
No, no, I don't, I, maybe, maybe the kitchen will close at nine. Typically, there's a gap between when we shut the doors and the kitchen closes. So I forget what the exact time was, but yes, the kitchen will close before 11:00. We won't close the kitchen at 11:00. We will close it before so that by 11:00, we can actually shut the place down. So make sure people... Also, in terms of sound, you mentioned, it's a stone building. We don't intend to have loud music. There will be some music, it's a pub. But what was more interesting is that the community asked us a number of times that can we have music events there?
Hmm, nice.
So there is a lot of interest to be able to actually provide a platform for local musicians and for the community to come and have events, obviously at appropriate time during the day, but there is an actually interest to say, can we now use this as a venue for musical events?
Very nice. So I'll, I'll use that as a little pitch for something coming up, too. We're trying to promote Pittsburgh as a music city, and their next month is Love Pittsburgh Music Month.
Yes.
And you can post, if you do start having entertainment, you can post on lovepghmusic.org.
Yeah.
Org, I think it's org, yeah. But I, so I was wondering about the price point there. If it is going to be affordable to the community, is the price point such that you can really be profitable?
Yeah.
In the timeframe that you're allotted?
That's, that's a very good question, because we, for us, it is important to make it affordable. If this is not affordable for the local community, it doesn't make sense. We obviously want to attract other Pittsburghers as well, but it has to be affordable for the community. So we've, we're, we're still researching the price point. It's not going to be, we're obviously going to have to make, make, make this sustainable from a business perspective, but it's not going to be super expensive. And, and one of the approaches we're going to take from a pub perspective, you know, we've been doing a lot of research. The reason pubs are so successful in, in UK and other parts there in Europe is they keep their menus simple, they are affordable, and, and they're, that's what we intend to do, is by not having a lot of fancy things on the menu, but some basic, basic things that are typical for a pub food, bring in some Pittsburgh elements. And there was another approach that we've started working with. There is a community kitchen in Hazelwood.
Right.
That kitchen has chefs that have, they have resources, they have equipment, and we're going to be putting an agreement where we start actually using the kitchen to do some of the work. That would be, so that would have two benefits. One is it would provide, it would use the resources of the community, train local resources, but also keep our price down. We're not looking at bringing the top chef in Pittsburgh. No, that, that approach would not survive. So that's, that's the approach, and we'll learn as we go along.
So will you be the operational manager, or is it someone else?
No, I, I will be part of the management team. I will be part of the operations management team, but I'm going to bring, I'm right now pulling together an operations team that has much more experience in the restaurant industry. So we're working on that. We're also looking at bringing on some consultants just early on to help us with things that you're talking about, waste management.
Very good.
Structuring the menu, making, how do you, we simplify the process of serving, and how do we work between the community kitchen and the Woods House kitchen, which is pretty small, because we've, we've had to keep it small for, for various reasons. So, so that's, that's the plan right now.
Okay, great. I, the only other thing I would say is that I can see this really being a destination, you know, with its, its historic character, and really just a kind of a unique concept. And so that means people would be potentially driving there and consuming alcohol. So if, if you can help us, assure us that, you know, you will do your best to encourage safe practices. We'd love that.
Absolutely. I mean, I, again, I don't say I know everything about those practices, but yes, we will be looking at all this, everything that people have been doing over the years and have learned to restrict that and manage that process.
That's great. And, and feel free to contact our offices. We can connect you with some other resources, too, that you probably have a really good network right now, I think, with the URA and, and Dave Bruton. You're in pretty good hands.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
If I may just add, as to your, your question in regards to service of alcohol at the premises, is that Woods House fully intends to be ramp certified, which is the responsible alcohol management program?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, I, I don't have any pictures. Usually, we have pictures to look at. Do you have some pictures here?
I have a packet for you.
They're included with the legislation here.
I might have some. I'm happy to email them to you, Councilwoman, as well.
I, what I'm looking for is what it looked like before you started.
Yes, yes, I think you might see that.
Okay, do you want to tell me what pages to look on? Or would you like to?
Here you go, Ms. Harris.
Okay, this was before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you got it in 2015?
I started working on it. No, I, we, when did we close?
We closed in 2018.
Okay, in 2018. That's a big difference there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's, it was a process to actually move, just get it ready to close.
Beautiful. Okay, and... Whose group, whose is this, yours? Okay. Can I make one of these after the meeting?
I believe I can send that to you via email, if you would look.
Yeah, okay. And that would, it would be color as well.
That would be great. So maybe you could show me what has been done so far on the outside of the building?
Um, we don't have any current pictures as to what has been done on the outside of the building.
I can show, I can tell you. I mean, the only thing we, because we just got our full construction permit, what, all we've done right now is to stabilize...
So you only got the permit to start working on? You only got the permit to start?
No, there were two permits. The first permit was for site preparation, demolition, and to stabilize the house, because the house was near collapse over the winter. So we got a permit to stabilize the house, which was really to fix the stonework and prevent the wall, one of the walls from falling down. So we wanted to get that done, and we got a permit for that, and the full construction permit was done with all the drawings and the stamped drawings were obtained.
Okay, so, so you have, you have pictures of what it was?
I can send you all the pictures.
It was falling down?
Yes.
And then you actually brought it back to where it was?
Yes, yes.
What else have you done towards histor, you know, to bring back its character?
Well, we are working right now on the roof. We rebuilt a chimney, which had, was, was originally there, but it disappeared over the years, but we found a photograph...
Right, oh, great.
...of the chimney, so we've putting, putting that chimney back on.
Uh-huh.
We've also looked at, there was pictures of a porch, so we're looking at building, rebuilding the porch, which originally was part of the original house.
Okay. And, and does he have pictures of that, that, you have pictures of?
We will put together a package of pictures.
Okay, that'd be great.
The other thing we're working right now is on the type of windows that we should install, because there's, there is, there are some pictures showing that the windows were not uniform on the first floor, they were uniform on the second floor, so we're just working through that to fix all the windows, make sure the windows are back. We've started, we'll, we will be making custom-built shutters, because all those windows had shutters at that period.
Well, they actually work?
Ah, yes, they would, they would work.
Oh, okay, great.
But that's, so there's a lot of those details that are going on. We also have, we realize we are going to have to restore the first floor, which is, which is, was much, much worse state than we thought it was once we removed the demo.
Always is.
So we, we're in the process of rebuilding the entire first floor as well.
Uh-huh. What year is this from?
Seven, the house was 1792.
1790, somewhere, 1792.
Okay. It's when I was still in Albany City. We weren't in the city of Pittsburgh at that time.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're trying to do is just get everything up?
Yes.
How and when will you be able to open? Are you going to finish the outside and some of the inside? And on the inside, are you going to try to make, you know, the way it was on the ins? So you're going to actually try to have to be inside?
We're going to have to, we probably, we will not open till the house is completed, and we've got the approval from the National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office saying everything is all right.
And the city?
And the city, yes. And the, yeah, the Pittsburgh city as well. So it's, it's, we will do it, we'll do it right. We want to make, we don't want to, we don't want to bring people into the house without it being ready, so we want to make sure it's going to be completely ready before we open. So I suspect it's going to be spring.
Uh-huh.
We, we, my, my builder is a lot more optimistic.
Spring next year, right?
Yes, very optimistic. He thinks it's going to get done by the end of the year. So I'm not changing the date for him. It's still end of this year, or this year, but when I do the math, I think we might realistically be looking at spring.
Now, you're trying to get basically the same windows, the way the windows were?
The same look and feel as the historic. We obviously could not, can't get the exact materials, but the other thing we are, we are going to be doing is reusing as much of the materials we can to rebuild. For example, if we took the first floor out, we've saved all the timbers, and we will use those timbers to fix the second floor. So we're trying to save as much as possible to reuse in the house that can be safely used.
Okay, so you won't be do, using any green wood or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, and when you open, is it going to be beer and Scotch, the way it was, or are you adding to it?
Did you say beer against Scotch?
Isn't that what you, is that what you said, beer and Scotch?
No, and Scotch, no, we will, we will, we will have other, other drinks as well.
Okay.
So, but, but the other thing we want to do is try and have as much local, again, so it's a connectivity and the network you spoke about. We've started discussions with local wineries, like Wiggle Whiskey, and local breweries.
They're in my district.
Yes, we've also spoken to Penn Brewery, and working with them...
It's in my district, too.
Is it?
They're all in my district.
Yes. We're also looking at, working with Penn Brewery to make a signature Scottish ale...
Nice.
...called The Woods House. So, and, and what, what we've done is we've actually got some Scottish ale, and they're trying to replicate that.
Okay.
So that, that'll be interesting, if we can get that done.
Why?
Be a proper Scottish ale brewed in Pittsburgh called The Woods House. So that would be an interesting, and that would, that would promote Penn Brewery, but the city of Pittsburgh and The Woods House.
Right. That sounds great. You said that you were going to try to make this in the affordable range, so, um, do you know any kind of foods that they were serving back then? Did you research that?
Well, you, you just got to, I don't, if you travel to UK or Scotland, you can see, and the food hasn't changed, but it's basic stuff. Obviously, we would like to keep some of the basic fare, like fish and chips, bangers and mash, shepherd's pie.
Right.
Some of the basic stuff, but, but also, but also make sure we have the things that people like, and people in the neighborhood today will like. So that's, that's where some creative chef discussions have to take place between the community kitchen. Our desire to be authentic, but at the same time, be Pittsburgh authentic.
Have you ever taken another building on historically?
No, this is my first project.
This is your first project like this?
Yeah.
That's great, that's great. I, I really hope it all goes in order, but you know, every time you take something out, there's something else to do.
Yeah, no, I, thank you for, thank you for that, uh, those missions. I appreciate it.
Oh, wow, but, um, it's, it's nice to see that someone's trying to bring some history back, you know? And this is a great area to, to bring it back. And I sure would like to stop out when you have it all.
Look forward to it.
Together and?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I love historic buildings and, uh, if you're, uh, going with a brewery for the Scotch, maybe I can get a sip before we get it over there? I'm not a real drinker, actually, but, uh, this, it sounds really nice. It sounds nice what you're going to do here. And, and do you think you're going to move any further than, well, once the neighborhood gets to see what you have? Will you, do you think you'll be going, uh, any further than eleven to eleven on the weekends?
No, I, I don't think so. I think, I think we'll stick with it. I mean, and then look around and you'll, you know, I live in Point Breeze. You got Point Bruges there. They're very popular, but they've been, they've maintained their hours. They're in, they're in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And, and that's really been a model for me to watch how they manage responsibility, being in, in a, in a community with lots of families and young children. And they use, if you go to Point Bruges, you see a lot of families with young children there. So that's been a great model for me. Um, I actually know the owner Jesse pretty well and we've been having discussions. So those are the kind of people I would be bringing in for advice, like Jesse would be one of them because he's been running a Point Bruges there, Park Bruges. I think they opened up one on the North, North Shore as well. So they know how to run that. So those, I will be asking for his advice on how to manage that. No change in hours, we're going to stick with it.
So in here, is there more than one room where, uh, you have a bar in one room, but you would have a, a back room or something?
That's a good question. So you're, you're right. The way we've kind of designed the places, we found this massive fireplace in the basement. It was actually a cooking hut and we wanted to use that as, as a focal point. So on, on the first floor, well, technically the basement, but it opens up onto the, into the gar- gardens, we're going to have a more of a bar pub type thing with seating. It still has access to the kitchen, so the full menu will be available, but that'll be there. On the first floor, where we wanted more of a family setting, there will be alcohol, there will be a bar to serve, but it'll be more of a restaurant type feel. So we tried to break that up a little bit.
Yeah, so it'll be broken up, so?
It both would have access to the same kitchen, both would have their dedicated, uh, bathrooms and all, everything, but, uh, they would, they would be a little bit of a difference.
Sounds great. Okay, you need this back.
I'll take mine back.
Okay, that's yours that I have. Okay, and you'll give me a copy?
We'll get you, we'll get you.
Okay, and you're going to get me extra pictures because I'm really interested in it. So I'll let you have yours back and, uh, too bad nobody thought to give anything like this to council like they usually do for things like this.
These materials were distributed to all members.
Wow. Sorry, I did not receive them today.
You do have all these materials, Councilwoman?
But if you would, uh, give that to me, I will give you my. Next up, questions?
Thank you. Councilwoman, so just quickly, because we, the purpose is to have the public hearing and I do want to get to the public to come in, register comment. But am I correct in, this is an architectural, architectural rendering of what you wish the property to see?
Thank you.
And then this, uh, following photograph is a artist's rendering of what you wish the interior to be.
Yes, the basement, which is.
Yeah, it's really very nice. It's really very, very nice. Um, it's really very, very nice. And again, all members were distributed these materials. So with that, I really need to go to, to, uh, the public that are here. Uh, so we are going to open up, uh, to, uh, the public to register comment. Um, uh, we ask that when you come to the podium that you would please give your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. Of course, each speaker is given three minutes to address the council. If you did not register in advance, uh, after we have exhausted the list of registered speakers, we will open up testimony for those in the audience who wish to speak and you will be given one minute. We did have one registered speaker whom I will take first, that is, uh, Ms. Brown, but Mr. Brenton, uh, has also come in and I will accept him as a registered speaker and give him his three minutes as well. So, uh, with that, uh, our first speaker is Yvonne Francine Brown, who wishes to register comment.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown and I am really kind of upset. The meeting was supposed to start at one thirty. The audience was sitting at the table, only Mr. Cross here. That's one thirty set until one forty. Oh, and he came in, missed that this man's going to speak behind me. He stopped, he asked him questions. Never been done before like that. Okay, and I said, you don't do this, usually don't do this. But the sergeant armed, only thing he wasn't here, he's trying to put me out again because I asked a question because he does things that he shouldn't. Look, the law states that they should start at ten thirty. Okay, don't start. And he sit around. I came in earlier this morning. One, they usually have twenty people speaking sometime, twenty people come, one person. So that meant when I brought the babies, I missed being able to speak because they had one. This has never been done in years, one person. Okay. I came because I, I, the reason why I come is I want to ask this, the reason why I come is because, I don't know why you couldn't hear me as loud as I talk. Um, the reason why I come is because there's a lot of time the citizens in the community do not know. So usually when I come, I say, does, does, do your community know about it? It seems like you do. It seemed like you told this community. Okay, it seemed like you did a good job and it seemed like the community wants it. I am going to deviate a little bit. See, because I came this morning, I came to wish my daughter, Yvonne, today is her birthday. She should be, I think, thirty-six. But I also wanted to tell you guys about, I wanted to say happy birthday to Big Daddy. I want to explain, I walk to city council just about every day because the buses, uh, in our neighborhood are not too good. As I walk down, about in PPG, there's a, uh, where they catch, you know, you, you pay, pay. At the very end of the civic, where the city re- civic, civic arena used to be, there's a, a, a little, little, where the man takes the money for the car. And that's Big Daddy's in there. Okay, he's a white man and I stopped and talked to him. I wanted to know why, how did I start talking to you? Well, it used to be pennies down there and I would pick him up and try to give him to me and he, he, he stopped me, started, and we started talking. Well, he has goodies, all kind of goodies, and he would give it to me, then he'd give to the babies. Now, he told me his name was Big Daddy, that's all I know, but look what I found for him. A sign, a bottle, I mean glass, that said Big Daddy. And the kids got some quarters they're going to put in there for him. See, I'm just saying this, this man is at the bottom of the hill. You know what he said? If you want to get money, you need to get them trucks, have a state policeman at the seventy-nine and catch him running the people down.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank, thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Just with, I've missed. Like to take this moment to remind anyone wishing to address the council at this public hearing. Comments need to be relatable to the bill that's on the table, which is Bill seventeen thirty-five. We do have a registered speaker who wishes. Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brit- Brenton, did I say that correctly? Bruton, welcome, uh, and you'll have your three minutes, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm the director of real estate for Hazelwood Initiative and wish to say that Krish and his development team have worked very closely with the community to make this work for the community. Um, when he first came in, the instant reaction to almost anything was negative because it, he wasn't a neighbor. Um, but he sat and listened and listened and listened and made, made good faith promises that he is demonstrating his goodwill efforts to keep. Um, where the community is very excited about the way he is caring for this historic building, um, and being sensitive to the neighbors. Uh, I mean, it's fascinating. One of the neighbors is a Baptist church that, um, does not consume alcohol, at least not publicly. And, uh, it, it's just been, uh, really encouraging. So I, I, I think the neighborhood is excited about his plans to steward the building. Um, there is, there's currently no, uh, places in Hazelwood like this. Um, his, even the ideas I heard him speak to you, uh, and continue to make me trust that we are in very good hands. I, I did have one question, if I may, because I'm not familiar with the process. I know, I know that the people in the neighborhood who might remain skeptical because any change is always frightening, um, would want to know that the liquor license, uh, will, if it were to pass from him to another owner, say, you know, at some future date, uh, that it would have these restrictions that he's voluntarily agreeing on. Uh, we really like the fact that this restaurant will not be open till two in the morning. Uh, we just, we, we trust Krish. We just want to make sure that whatever we're approving here in terms of the permit, uh, does not open the door for a future owner to turn it into a problem bar. And I would welcome, if, if anyone here is able to give me clarification, I would like to share that with the community so that we know that the, the government is backing up the agreement that we have come to with the developer.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and that does exhaust, exhaust the list of speakers that wish to, uh, address the council as it relates to Bill seventeen thirty-five. I would like to take a crack at answering, uh, David's question. Uh, we have had success in the past, uh, as a council, uh, actually amending alcohol licenses with conditions, uh, that have traveled with the license. We've had great success in having the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board respect the council's wish to, uh, to attach such, uh, I hate to use the word restrictions, but.
Conditions.
Conditions, uh, to the license. And, uh, and we have done it previously. Uh, if it is something that you wish to see working with the local community organization, this council would be very happy to entertain that. Um, and we'll work with the councilman, of course. Uh, and, uh, if, again, if it's something that you wish to see, uh, we absolutely would be willing to consider that and consider the attachment of that to this application.
I think that's, that's a good point and maybe that's a discussion day for us to have with the community and see if that is required.
As well as, uh, the issue of takeout.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's absolutely, we've said that's not happening.
Which is going to be a sidebar conversation to the public hearing, but you are welcome to have that and bring that here to this council and we would be happy to entertain that.
Okay.
Uh, I have, um, uh, a couple of questions myself, if, if I may please, before we go on. Uh, the relationship between, if I understand liquor law right and, and it's complex as what it is, I do my best, but, you know, I fall short. An establishment needs to show the capacity in which to operate the alcohol license before the license is granted?
No, that, that is not correct. Um, we are actually applying for this, uh, considering that, um, this resolution passes and we apply for the transfer of this license to the Woods House location, uh, we will.
Please.
Been interrupted by a duck quacking on a phone before, so a dog is, uh, the, the least of my worries. But, uh, you can actually apply for this on prior approval based upon the build out drawings that you intend to later build out. And then at that point in time, um, and then whenever the build out has been completed, then they, the liquor control board will come back out and view whether or not you have completed the build out in accordance with the drawings that they had approved the license transfer on. At that time, they will give you permission to operate.
So I'm going to take this a little bit further. This is for my own understanding. So then, um, with the application, you can submit what you believe to be reasonable, realistic drawings of what you intend the operation to look like. Um, and then they can approve it based on those drawings. They'll come back out to reexamine. The question I have then is, is there a timeline by which one agrees that that structure is going to be brought into a condition whereas the alcohol license has the capacity in which to operate?
It, it used to be six months, but, uh, recently the board has removed that restriction. It was never really, um, any restriction that was set hard and fast in any regulations. Uh, they have since removed that restriction and, uh, you know, all they really, so the license is considered to be in safekeeping until that time. So they're more concerned with, you know, maintaining the safekeeping fees and the safekeeping applications at that point.
Safekeeping, as I understand it, comes from the request of the owner to place a safekeeping.
It is, it is upon, upon being approved for transfer on a prior approval basis, whenever the sale of the license is closed, that license is kept in safekeeping until such time.
For said time.
Until such time as the operator is ready to begin their operations.
But the restriction moved. I mean, is it reasonable to speculate that one could go two or three, even one, two, three years without completing the, uh, the, uh, the operations, if you will, so as to house the license?
It, that would get very expensive due to the safekeeping requirements and the, the escalating and doubling of the safekeeping fees every year to the point where it may not be within the best interest to maintain that license.
At first I realized there's fees to safekeeping. I didn't know that.
A- a- after, after, after two years, there's a $10,000 fee within the city of Pittsburgh, um, within Allegheny County, then it's $20,000, then $40,000. It doubles for every period.
After two years of it being in, so you get a pass, if you will, for the first two years?
Yes. It used to be three. They've amended it to two. And now your safekeeping fees, they, they grow astronomically. We, we don't expect this term of build out to be an issue. Um, you know, by the end of the year, early spring, unless catastrophe strikes, and we all hope that does not happen.
That was very helpful. I'm, I'm, thank you. I needed to understand that for myself.
I will send you the bill.
Would you please?
Yes.
Yeah, that would, that would be, oh, you mean the bill. I thought you meant, I thought you meant as in existing legislation that dictates those terms is what I thought you meant. Um, I think that was pretty much all of my questions. Uh, Councilwoman Harris, you look like you have another one?
Yeah, why is the license coming from outside the city of Pittsburgh?
We, we don't often like to bring licenses into the city of Pittsburgh. However, um, due to the growth of the restaurant business within the city itself, licenses are becoming rarer and rarer. Also with that growth, um, comes the decline of certain restaurants. A lot of times whenever a restaurant goes out of business or a restaurant or bar goes out of business, um, one of the last things they do, well, one of the first things they do is they stop paying their drink tax or they stop paying their state taxes or their, um, employee taxes, which puts a, an issue with what's called a tax clearance on the license, where the license actually cannot be transferred. So one of the, so we actually looked for a while for a city of Pittsburgh license. We, uh, brought in a broker to assist us. And quite frankly, the, the ones that, um, were avail- the ones that were in safekeeping were for build out purposes or they were otherwise being used. Um, or we could not guarantee that we could get, um, clearance to be able to transfer them and it would be too great of a risk that if we were to attempt that, that we may not get the transfer completed in time for him to open. So the option then became, well, we need to try to bring one in to ensure that his timetable is met.
Okay. Uh, because I know there, there's, um, some that are in safekeep because of shutting down a bar and they can never use that license at that location again and it has to be moved?
Correct, but that doesn't mean that it is available to be moved because a lot of times one of our bar begins to get into trouble. Um, you, you know, where they shut down with a, with a conditional licensing agreement saying that they can't operate there. A lot of times what you see is, you see where, you know, if we do our due diligence on that license prior to entering into an agreement, where, where the, instead of finding out like three, four months down the road, um, we've discovered that, you know, they haven't paid sales taxes or they, we can't find the individual responsible for remitting the tax returns or something along those lines. Or they have borrowed far too much money so that the license is underwater and there would, we would basically be purchasing, you know, um, a, a lien on the license as well, which basically ensures that the license is not transferable or unusable in its current state. Now, just because a license is in safekeeping doesn't mean- safekeeping doesn't mean that it's viable.
Okay, okay, I'll go with that.
Allison, you have one more thing you wanted to offer up?
Um, uh, just wondering about the outdoor seating, and, um, I believe it or not, a lot of the complaints we get about noise are just dishes clinking and people talking. I know that's ridiculous if you're living next to a restaurant, but, so, just wondering, is that closing down earlier, if you're serving till eleven or noon?
Well, um, I mean, that's a good question. On the outdoor seating, the only outdoor seating we have is on the porch right now.
Okay. Is that on the basement or the-
No, that's on the top, on the first floor, and we, it, it's gonna have, it's gonna be covered.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be a covered, uh, porch.
Okay.
It's not gonna be an open, so we hope we can minimize that.
Right.
And there's things we can do in terms of noise dampening. Uh, I mean, again, it's, you know, in terms of noise dampening around the covered porch, that would help.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is no seating right now on, on the outside.
Okay.
It's either all inside, or it's on the porch.
Okay.
So.
All right, that's it.
So, uh, I'm just gonna finish up by sort of making one more comment. Um, uh, that would be, um, uh, to whatever work you need to complete with Hazelwood Initiative, it's to your benefit to, to complete that in as timely a manner as possible. We will continue to work with, uh, the councilman's office. Um, if there is desire to see certain conditions attached, the council would wanna see those at the time of our consideration, which is why it would behoove you to, to work within the organization in as efficient a manner as you can. One of the things that, that I have experienced in the past, which makes me really wanna support the idea of, of conditions coming onto the license, um, is the, uh, the operator is not necessarily, um, uh, the establishment, in that, uh, it, it's my understanding, this, this physical piece of real estate has never housed an alcohol license before, correct? And so, now that it will, it will for all time, far beyond any of us who are here to, uh, to, to discuss it or even enjoy it, that footprint will be allowed to house a liquor license under Pennsylvania state law. But operators will come and go. And while I have every reason to believe, uh, that Mr. Pena is going to be a superior operator, Mr. Pena is not immune from death and taxes, right? And so, operators are gonna come and go. Um, and the, we have experienced far too many times, when the operator switches, what was once a wonderful establishment is vulnerable to becoming a problematic establishment. And so, um, I, I appreciate that. I know there are other council members that appreciate it as well, too. And so, if, uh, if you're going to do that, we're happy to entertain it, and, uh, I would just argue that we would like to have it for our preliminary discussions.
And Councilwoman Kraus, I, I have experience in drafting those type of arrangements and agreements, and there are certain, um, stipulations that obviously we would want put into place, um, you know. So, I, I think that would involve a back and forth, but we can get that done fairly quickly, based upon just what I'm hearing, you, you know, from the, the public comments.
Wonderful, thanks. Thank you very much, it's a pleasure meeting you. Uh, it really was, and I just love the building, love the building. I'm gonna have to take a, maybe you'll take a ride with me, we'll go out and take a look. Love to go out and see it, it's beautiful.
I, I would wait till it dries out a little bit more, because if you step on that property right-
It's pretty rough right now.
If you step on the property right now, I will tell you, you might lose a, a shoe at this point, so.
You can see stuff from driving by, but it's rough.
Yeah, it's been pretty dry, it's felt.
It's a beautiful property. Madam Cork, I kinda ruined your legislation there, so we've got it all out of order. So, if there's nothing else from anyone then to offer at the public hearing, I am gonna motion to adjourn the public hearing, and-